Committee of the whole meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order if we can all run for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dave Long.
Uh, roll call. We have everybody present except for councilman Lundin is running a little late, but is supposed to be here. So, we're just gonna move on. Committee items, liquor updates. Mr. John Jacob.
Alright, so, uh, I'll kinda go through these and then if you have any questions at the end, we can certainly ask them. Um, so our gross profit from months of May through August is about twenty-seven point three zero, so a kinda average amount. Um, as we go here, our sales exceeded the prior year once again in all four months. July is showing our largest sales increase totally nationally, three oh two. We just got the report yesterday from Mike. Uh, three hundred thousand is the biggest month that store's ever had, so that's a good thing. So, yep. Um, we've always been under that, so it was a good thing to see. Um, we've been including the building with beer programs sponsored by Miller Coors. They have insured it tasting, uh, once per month. They had missed a month and they made it up. So, um, it's important that we do these things 'cause we are part of their group buying program. Uh, we're planning an employee informational meeting to cover some items dealing with proper policies and procedures at the register. Um, this meeting's including ringing up Kegs and gift certificates. Um, there's been a lot of confusion with other municipals in following the law of Kegs, uh, tagging them properly. So, um, it's kinda important we just go through all the details if there's any question on, um, Kegs and who's purchasing them. So, um, we will go through that. Um, our Facebook page, of course, has been up and running since April eighteenth. We have approximately three hundred and seventy-five followers. If you remember, my last report was about a hundred and fifty. Um, so we continue to gain followers, uh, especially when we post giveaway items. Um, we had over three thousand people on the giveaway for the Bush cooler. So, those little things, um, kinda, we did a drawing to do it, but, uh, um, we've been posting new items several times per week, um, and we think that this has really helped our sales overall in the last several months. I just laughed today 'cause Keith just put out a new seltzer online, uh, on his Facebook page. I even put the product in and three people came and asked me for it. So, does it work? Oh, yeah. So, it's a good thing. Um, teaming up, uh, with farmer's market has increased our customer counts overall on Fridays. Uh, typically before, we did farmer's market in our parking lot. Our Saturdays were our best sales days. No longer the case. Uh, typical Friday before, the average customer count was seven eighty-five. Now, it's over a thousand. So, it's really helped us, um, overall business-wise too on that day. Um, we are struggling to remain fully staffed. Uh, we're doing our best to cover busy summer weekend shifts. Uh, we still plan to do a food and wine pairing dinner for, to educate our staff. Uh, we'll probably try for it sometime this fall once we are fully staffed. Um, so the last item on here is we're doing the MMBA support the local fire department. This is our first time running it. Uh, it's running from August seventh to September eleventh. All donations will go to the Asani Fire Department. Um, and then we just did our own in-house auctioning off a Weber grill. Um, and the fire department added to the display. I don't know if anybody's seen it, but they've got, um, some gear there and a helmet, so it's pretty cool. So...
Is that an online auction or was that...
Um, no, that one we did not do an online auction. It's just when they come in, they just fill out stuff and then we'll draw for it, um, after the September eleventh is done.
Okay, so it's more like a raffle?
Yeah, a raffle. Yep. Yeah, sorry. I did say auction tonight. So...
I don't wanna put in for that. Everybody will say it's fixed.
That's right.
Any other questions on that? Any other questions, comments, concerns from the council?
Great comments always.
Yeah, like, thanks. Moving on to number two, mosquito discussion. Here. In this item, I believe we just wanted a simple yes or no from the council. Do we wanna do mosquito spraying in the city of Asani? I know Mr. Sylvester and myself, we've discussed that probably doing it organically would be cheaper way to do it. Yeah, we might have to spray it twice as much, but it would still be cheaper. If I'm wrong, please correct me.
Nope, that's right. It would be cheaper to spray it organically.
So, we're, we're looking at spraying organically. Yeah, we might have to do it twice as much, but that's what I'd like to do. Um, so we need to discuss simple yes or no from the council. No, sir. We'll do it twenty twenty. We'll start.
Mayor Council, if the consensus today is that we do want to have mosquito spraying, that'll give Mike direction, uh, to include those numbers into the budget for twenty twenty.
I'll say yes.
I would say yes. I'd be a yes. Do organic stuff will actually work though. I mean, you have to do it twice as much, but it will really do the job.
There was nothing that says it won't work. Everybody I talked to about it says it will work, so...
Have you talked to any municipalities that actually use a chemical?
Say that again?
Have you talked to any other municipalities that actually use a chem- chemical and have had good success with it?
No, the only person I could talk to is the manufacturer uses a powder. No other person that I could talk to uses a true powder, but the manufacturer says it will work, true powder.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't believe you. And they're gonna say the product, product won't work.
I, I didn't talk to no person that sprays it organically on foliage and has sprayed successfully.
That's what you're saying.
And that's a commercial person that does a commercial...
Mr. Burgley?
But Dan does all the time. I'm kind of interested in his opinion before I vote here.
I don't think organic works as well.
You don't?
Yeah, I just, I can say if you're gonna have to do it twice as much, that means you're gonna demand that much of your employees, that much more of your employees, and it sounds like they didn't wanna do it at the beginning. Also, now we're gonna be asking them to do it twice as much.
That has flipped. Now, that's because obviously we're gonna have to sweeten it. This is why I didn't wanna get into it. We could sit here and talk forever. We just needed to simply yes or no. But we'll sweeten the deal for public works.
They were also enthused the fact that it went from two people coming in to one person coming in. And if it works, I mean, I have, I'm here to go weekly for twelve weeks and...
See what it's like.
See what it's like. We put it every couple of weeks.
You can get some mosquito counters and you got some numbers to go off instead of just, you know, jam on this side of counter, you know, leave on that side of counter.
Your opinion do matter to me, gentlemen. So, councilman Burgley.
I said yes.
Councilman Collison?
Yep.
The consensus is yes, five zero, so...
So, then the mayor and council, just to be, um, we, you mentioned it briefly. So, if they were to do mosquito spraying, their request is that when they come in, they would, um, during the summer months, then be getting a two-hour, or instead of a two-hour callback time, it'd be a three-hour. That was something that they thought was fair, and I also agree. I think that that is fair. So, that would be something that would be included with their contract that would, um, marry up with because of adding mosquito spraying. We wouldn't have to change anything else, but, and then that would put them consistent with the police unit as well.
You have three hours of pay whether they come in or not?
No, only if they come in.
And then time and a half for the amount of time they're here?
Yep. That's 'cause they're on call that week.
Are we gonna rush to name?
Uh, we have nineteen items left, council.
Well, you know, they gotta stick to the budget.
You're right. And it will be, Mike's already well aware, but the consensus of what we needed is did we wanna do it? And if we wanted to do it, then we'll, we'll go forward with everything. But if we didn't even wanna do it, we didn't wanna waste nobody's time. So, if this is wanting to be entertained by the city, then Matt can do more. Mike can do his part, and more will come back to us. I mean, it still has to go up in city council. But the consensus was yes, so... Moving on to item three, LE LS Local Two Seventeen Tentative Agreement.
Thank you, mayor. Alright, mayor and council, we have, um, had great discussions with the LA LS representative and also the union steward. What you have before you in your memo is the tentative agreement that of the things and items that were agreed upon tentatively as well as requests that were not agreed upon. Um, it does have on your page two how it does affect the budget. Overall, I think it was a really great, fair contract, and the members of the voting bargaining agreement did vote by majority that yes, they were also in agreement that this is a tentative agreement. So, I don't believe, or is if there's any questions, concerns from the council committee? Otherwise, this would go on to, um, an upcoming city council meeting for approval.
Any questions, comments, or concerns by the council?
I agree. Moving forward.
I would agree. Chief, I did ask you earlier if everybody was happy with this?
Yes.
That's all I looked for. Anybody have an objection moving forward? Alright. Moving on to item four, the IOUE Local Forty-nine Tentative Agreement.
Alright, this was another, uh, great discussion that we had with our, um, bargaining unit of the Forty-niners and Don Public Works. And what you have before you in your memo is what was tentatively, tentatively agreed upon, the items that we did not agree upon, um, how that does, um, pretty minimally affect the budget, and if everything is good to go here. If you don't have any questions, concerns, or comments, or, um, modifications, this would go on to an upcoming city council agenda for approval.
And Matt Sylvester, I ask you the same questions of all the fellows who are happy with this?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, comments, or concerns by the council?
Moving forward. I just had a question on the, uh, hundred days for seasonal employees. Is that pretty typical, or I mean, that's if we're gonna, you know, let's say if we're doing mosquito spraying, are you gonna need any temporary seasonal employees to help with that, or, you know, that would be a four-month process there? So, we're looking at hundred and twenty days, you know, so...
They won't be able to help with that, is any...
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, alright.
We did, it wasn't increased from sixty-seven days, um, which, that was one of our requests that we had on the city side because of the compo site opening in fourteen, these months of November.
So, this is better than it was then already?
Better than it was. It was sixty-seven.
Alright, so I'm happy with that then.
Anybody have an objection of moving forward? Alrighty then. Item five, current noise ordinance five twenty-five. Chief Myers.
Mayor and council, it's brought to me to take a look at our noise ordinance and see if there's changes. Um, our noise ordinance is pretty similar to the model ordinance from the LEED. And included a couple other ordinances. It had a couple unique things, uh, like decibel readings, um, as well as some timeframes that we don't have in our ordinance as far as like quiet times. Um, our ordinance right now generically says unreasonably noise disturbs. Uh, somebody could be potential violation of noise ordinance. So, I guess first look at a direction. If you wanna look a bit further, even as it is, I gotta look at some other influence onto that ordinance or not.
I don't think a decibel meter myself would be appropriate, 'cause then we're gonna have to pay somebody to train, then we're gonna have to, um, pay for the thing to be calibrated all the time, and that's gonna be costly to the city. I think there's a fifty-foot, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, uh, we could put fifty feet or a hundred feet, whatever we wanted to make it.
'Cause the problem you have with the subjective ordinance is, is what's the annoyance factor to resident A versus annoyance factor to resident B? It was reasonable. Um, the footmark, uh, describes if the noise is disturtable from, uh, fifty. And other ones have, uh, like the school zones, different distances. It just gives an actual benchmark, so that's an option.
And then we can do whatever we thought. I don't know what you guys were thinking on it.
What are the hours?
We didn't make them yet.
We do have hours for construction equipment, lawn mowers, stuff like that.
What are those?
Or that's ten to seven, I believe.
Ten to seven P M?
Ten P M to seven A M.
Oh, okay, okay. I was confused about that.
That just is, you, you can't operate those things. The other ones, the hours, uses some of the similar timeframes, which have a more enhanced, uh, for a lot of parties, per se. Um, so the, what would be allowable during the day would necessarily be allowable during those times. Right now, we only have the construction equipment that's not allowed during those times.
So, if he just wanted, we could...
That's at ten P M? That starts at?
Actually nine.
Oh, nine hours.
So, where is this covered? Do we have, do we have a lot of complaints or...
Yes.
Or just don't, for them to work with, as a place of complaints?
Yeah, it's complaints and it's, this objective standard is somewhat difficult to apply. Uh, you know, what is a reasonably annoying level of disturbance, uh, and how do you apply that evenly across the city?
Is there, is there any kind of a weekend or a first, or how about special events like, you know, you know, like on Jubilee Day?
Well, they, when they get a special events permit, you know, like the street dance and stuff.
Yeah, but I mean, if you walk, if you walk the resident area, you know, you're kind of, I'm not complaining. I personally don't care, 'cause I know too. I'm just wondering if there's any new ways sometimes on special events or...
As the ordinance is written now, there is not any discernibility between hours a day or day a week or special event or non-special event.
We're kinda giving our police department a leg to stand on and probably lessening the restrictions on this ordinance. If we did a quiet time and, and a fifty to a hundred feet, if you could hear, it would be considered a disturbance. We're just giving the police department a leg to stand on and/or lessening the burden on our residents. 'Cause right now, it's, it's so tight that...
Well, it's subjective, so if, if we get a call that the neighbors, whatever noise, is annoying them, in essence, would that be a violation of our ordinance because it's any day? So, there's no benchmark to measure if that would be a violation or not.
So, he needs a direction here, gentlemen. Um, I personally think that decibel meter is garbage. I would go feet and time would make sense. I mean, what would your recommendation be, chief?
I concur that decibel meter, there's a lot more headache that would come into that. It sounds good. Those are actually MPCA, um, guidelines, uh, just for certain timeframes. It's kinda where that, I think was hot, or Stillwater, we'll put that one. There's too many variables in there, so I would not prefer that one or that piece of an ordinance.
Questions, comments, concerns, council? You see, you see the city of Stillwater on there, councilman Collison? You see the city of Stillwater that they do out there?
No, I was just looking at the, uh, the first one, was it?
I'd like ours to use something as far as an enforcement line.
Human noise?
Little teeth, right? I mean, that's part of what you're kinda looking for.
Well, not necessarily.
Teeth, which is something for us to have a benchmark. You know, the speed limit, you're over the speed limit, it's not...
Right.
Bang. It's just a bang, that's the intent, so...
Right. And I would agree with you.
I, I would agree with you, but I think that that's a more of a, this is a time.
Yeah, the conversation's going at the same time here.
It's awesome. Why is this, if there's like a half a dozen armies on this street, not one?
But it's giving an apartment a leg to stand on.
I, yeah, really...
Right now, I mean, we could, we can pick every one of those apart. It'd be breaking their noise every day. That also would be...
What I'm getting at is if this, for this one example, that if this is what we're gonna have, you're not allowed. Those are complaining about this because they, they hardly work at six in the morning and, you know, three months out of the year.
Do they need to rev their engine or fly through your neighborhood though?
No, they're, well, just idle. So, I'm just getting, I'm just saying, this might work for some people, but it's not gonna work for others, so...
I think it's more of a, for a leg to stand. They get a complaint, but if continually complain about it, they can turn around and say, hey, this is the issue. I mean...
We're not looking to be a, a burden here, councilman Collison. We're not looking to pick people apart.
I understand that, but it's, I'm saying, this is what it's gonna, this is, that's what it'll come to.
Yeah, I think, I agree with that. I think, you know, it's just like during Jubilee Day, you walk the resident area, people are... Maybe people are complaining to their relatives.
Right, but I mean, like, I mean...
As long as they don't complain, there's no reason for a police to be in it.
But, you know, I think you said that we, if we need to tweak something, we can do that. But I think we just should look at it very closely.
You said leg to stand. I understand. I may be driving through the neighborhood with all of them. All the neighbors are right here to have their heart. But I'm just saying, it's a tough call.
I'm sure, I'm sure our police department doesn't...
There is no perfect...
No, there is no perfect ordinance.
Because you're gonna tweak something, you're always gonna have people, you know, and vice versa, so...
Right, right now, it's pretty low. Right now, if you were to look at this ordinance, you mowing your lawn would disturb me.
If I was doing it before ten o'clock and, or like...
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter, because we don't have a timeframe.
Exactly.
So, you, you were mowing...
But what I'm saying, the timeframe is gonna, we need to put a time.
You can mow it at six P M. It's bothering me. How about the police?
That's just...
That's the way it is right now.
Right.
Which is crazy.
Yeah.
We need to have a, we need to give them a leg to stand on.
Yeah, I understand.
The clarification is when we get a noise complaint from a neighbor, how do, you know, how do we address that with one neighbor that's calling every so many days?
Right.
And saying it's annoyance and not reasonably disturbing there, peace and quiet? Um, 'cause that is the verbiage in the beginning of our noise ordinance.
I think if we did so many feet variable and with a time frame, I think it would give my leg to stand or bad.
And these corrections, I think, would actually, you know, if you look at it, it's not gonna actually force more of the noise ordinance. It would allow us to deal with what is a violation of what is...
I mean, right. I mean, after all, you're still a discretion of the police officer. I don't think...
Well, yeah, but what I'm saying is whatever we decide on for the ordinance, they have to move on that. It's not up to discretion, police officer at that point, because the person that's complaining is gonna say it right here. It says right here. You know what I'm saying?
Currently, it's a discretion the way it is vague.
I keep stumbling toward the points I'm trying to get at here, what it currently is versus what we're trying to make it. Don't take you.
Well, I would like the weekend, like, stuck in the last, to stay up all the way. But I think they do anyway.
We can make the time whenever we want.
Yeah, no, I know, but I'm, I'm saying, I think it should be ten to six, or ten to seven every weekend, eleven to seven, Friday's everything.
Or we could just make it eleven to seven, councilor.
I would agree with that. I'd rather it be ten to six, ten to seven, councilor.
But what's, the street dance is at typically around eleven?
Eleven. Eleven, but the way you would probably likely word it would be a time, whatever he designated that to be, unless approved by city council, which those would be all the ones that fall under that special then permit.
Yeah.
Those have been, gotten special approval from council to authorize it. Um, it's kinda similar to where in our, um, for construction, it does have it within the streets that the public services director can allow, or the city engineer, I think it's those two people, can allow for a construction company to work outside of those hours if permitted. So, you would just have something in there to give those exceptions if you wanted to.
So, the consensus I'm hearing, chief, is we wanna do a timeframe for sure.
I would, I mean, I'm not arguing. They need, they need something to go by. It's just...
Is that consensus ten P M to seven A M?
Unless permitted.
Yeah, I will include that.
I would, I would be okay with that. Friday, Saturday, bumping it up.
Eleven to seven?
Yeah.
What was that?
Friday and Saturday bumping it to eleven to seven? I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, typically, I'm one people celebrating events or staying up later on those nights. So, plus yours.
Especially in councilman Collison.
Hey, I go to bed at thirty every night, so it doesn't matter.
Well, that's when senior housing makes you, councilman Lundin, but we won't go there.
I am a senior too, major.
Other than that, is anybody else wanna...
Did we wanna add in the fifty feet, the distance?
I think you had it in there, yeah.
It's not...
As a recommendation.
As a recommendation. Fifty to a hundred. I mean, the problem with living here though is noise literally carries. It's a little ignored.
Especially if they're...
I think the language and other, the other ordinance are, are at a distance of fifty feet if the source is located outside a structure or building. So, that would be those uptight things.
Do, I mean, what's the benefit of adding footage? I mean, if someone calls and complains, they have, so you can hear it. Why do they, why do we have to have footage in there?
The only difference is it is a tangible benchmark. Um, you know, if there's a, what is the annoyance or what is the disturbing noise? So, we can't put, if fifty, you know, if you can hear it, is that a violation of our ordinance?
Right.
So, it's just putting some benchmark, like a speed limit on some, on, it's just something to go up. Okay, well, I think, I would put that in there.
I think it might be a way to also have it so they have a benchmark, so if someone's just not complaining 'cause they don't like their neighbor. It's actually making...
Fifty feet would be pretty much the person right next door, yeah? Your typical lots, eight feet wide.
That's what I say. A hundred feet might be a little more...
You know, I mean...
Yeah.
Fifty feet would be...
Hundred feet would probably be a little more better, maybe, or pencil?
Yeah. But sort of maybe you... I have to talk to them.
It is.
I think we just go with the hundred feet.
I, I agree. I agree. Hundred feet times...
Where we go on that?
Good for you, chief?
Sounds good.
You'd be surprised if I kept reading what actually, 'cause I had been on top where they do them. And you'd be surprised how actually, how low the things are at that distance. So, the decibels is, like you said, I think needs to be removed from there, 'cause that's just gonna be costly.
Yeah.
It's gonna cause more issues because it's actually, you think it's lower than it really is.
Right. And then you gotta calibrate that thing. You gotta train people. It's just, you're paying out the rear end for that.
Yep. So, I think we remove that and add the hundred feet and eleven to seven on weekends, Saturday, Friday, Saturday.
Right.
I trust the officers if they're rolling down the street and, honestly, they're gonna understand.
Well, I said, it's actually, the clarification's gonna help. I like the opposite side of that, 'cause we're getting complaints that this is annoying. It's, you know, every three days, we're getting a call and we're not doing anything, even though the officer at the time doesn't seem annoying to them. But in ordinance, it's not what's annoying to the officer. It's annoying or disturbing to the neighbor.
So, the direction that this item will go is that...
By far, the decibel levels.
Okay.
You know, you guys can hear pretty good. You don't know what's a decibel meter, but, you know...
So, this item will be drafted by chief Myers, and it will come back to the next how as a draft ordinance to meet that requirement. So, you'll have another opportunity if you think of what it for there, um, but then that should be drafted.
Can we put it on that night's council if we accept it?
No, 'cause that actually has to be posted for ten days for a state statute as an ordinance, and then it would go to council.
That's the same way I was, councilman Lundin, when I heard it.
Not by choice. Not my choice.
I mean, we're just, we wanna get these things moved through, done, not just for the...
I agree. I agree.
Alright, next item.
Moving on to item six, the chicken ordinance. Ms. Ellman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, in July, we had a discussion about non-chickens in the cities. Uh, we discussed, um, numbers, coops, everything that you put in the chicken room. Um, I created the ordinance for it for your review. Um, one of the things that came up was the number of chickens. Um, I have less than three acres, now I go six chickens, more than three acres, twelve. That was based off of notes and what I had in the last committee meeting. So, I'd like to have your feedback on that, if that's what you wanted to go with. And then also just for a discussion point is enforcement of this ordinance, enforcement of the number of chickens. Who's gonna do that? How do you want that done? Um, if there's noise, then cleaning up after the chickens and so forth? Just kind of something to think about when creating an ordinance like this.
I would concur, councilman Lundin. He's saying C S O, uh, which would be under the realm of chief Myers. I think that's, who should enforce it, who should make sure it's, the ordinance is being followed just as written on the piece of paper we're all reading here.
If they have more than or lower chickens, Jimmy's Pizza will have chicken.
Chief Myers can take, chief Myers can take a one too, so... Uh, chief Myers doesn't have a farm. He's gonna have chickens too, chief.
Let's hold them to the required number of years before you can...
Hey, I like Jimmy Ferry, 'cause he can make it right here.
I don't think your home department would like that.
No.
Okay, so we did, uh, as Ms. Ellman did say, she did incorporate everything that was talked about that last committee, the whole... So, the lot size, where it is, pretty much mirrors the city of North Branch, but where the lot size, um, we had it less than three acres. There are six chickens, where before, in that one, I believe that there was... Three acres, there are six chickens, where before, in that one, I believe that there was at one acre and then up to three acres, you know, so this is up to three, three acres. Is six chickens and then more than three acres is twelve chickens, is that?
I like the way it is.
Good, okay.
Gentlemen? Any issues?
Is that? One question, the owner wants to keep the chickens in a coop or fenced area? What's the size of that fenced area?
We didn't specify that.
No, we're not fenced.
I care if it's fenced and they're going right up to the neighbor's property, that's what I'm getting at.
Number six, Councilman Collison, shall be more than ten square feet per chicken.
And that includes a fenced area?
That would be.
And that's the coop and enclosure.
Okay.
So ten s- ten square feet per chicken, so sixty square feet, six chickens.
Yep.
I like it. You okay, Councilman Collison?
Mm-hmm.
All right, that is well, like I mentioned on the other line, it'll be posted for ten days and I'll go on the following city council meeting for approval.
Awesome. Item seven, liquor wage proposal, Mike Becker.
So what you have in your memo is, uh, outline the details of, uh, I have a wage differential for part-time liquor staff. Um, the proposal is for a dollar fifty an hour, um, uh, to be applied to weekend and holiday hours at the, at the liquor store. Uh, the goal is to make, uh, staffing those shifts in those hours, uh, a little more manageable for John.
Cause John, you're struggling with filling these shifts? Is that what we're understanding?
Yes, I think what I struggle with is the weekends because I don't think it's fair that. The same part-timer has to work every Friday or every Saturday and. I try to spread it out and I'm short-staffed now and I think that would be a good incentive, seems like a lot of liquor stores around us are actually paying more than us, so a shift diff is kind of our alternative to help it out, I think.
Do you think?
The shift differential will be, it'd be a good thing, so I had more people volunteering on the weekends is what I'm looking for, so.
Okay.
I concur, I think, I think the liquor store does is fabulous and if Mike and, uh, John got this figured out, I think we should proceed with it.
Any objections to that, gentlemen?
I'd be all for it, but I think it's gonna help you retain people, hopefully a little bit easier to, you know, training them in is half of the, half the work, so. Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I would have to agree myself, Bert, Councilman Berg, Councilman Collison, anything you wanna add?
Sounds good to me.
All right, we're all in agreeance on that one. Number eight, the min spec discussion, Ms. Selman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, um, this was best we brought forward again from the last committee of the whole. I put together, uh, a memo that indicates, um, some things that we can do as far as the inspector's concerned, we can work with the inspector. Um, and with the builders on the complaints, we can look to terminate the contract if both parties agree and find replacement. Which could include either hiring another firm, hire an in-house building inspector. And building official or share a building official or inspector with another city. Um, the numbers are in the memo on what it would cost to have an in-house, uh, inspector. Also, um, we do have our contract with the inspector till December twenty twenty, we do not have an out. In that contract and they are currently and have not been breaching their contract.
I'm gonna tell you right now. I was just in Lionel Lakes. And I talked to Mayor Johnson about this, they have a min spec that are also helping them. And they said the exact same thing we are seeing right now. Every builder down there has been complaining about them, they're not turning off the prunes fast enough, they're not getting reviewers done fast enough. And they're fumbling everything they do.
Scott.
These are gaining a hundred and eighty dollars an hour on gas.
Scott from min spec is present, and I was just gonna ask him to step forward, but he's already coming up here, so.
Mr. Lundin, did you say Lionel Lakes?
No, I meant Lake Elmo, I didn't.
Okay. Um. If you'd like me to respond, I will, I just wanted to clarify, he said Lionel, I thought he said Lionel Lakes.
He did.
Okay.
I did, I, yeah, I mean.
He corrected himself.
But yes, it's Lionel against Lake Elmo.
So we were asked to come to Lake Elmo to, um, solve a similar problem, I guess, when their building official left. And, uh, we were brought in, they had an in-house employee, continued to be, uh, for a while, a building official. While we were doing planner view and backup services and then they transferred responsibility of the building official to us until we hired someone else to do that. We are, uh, not doing planner view, uh, for them, we haven't been doing planner view for them for, um, I believe several months. Uh, because that all came back in after they hired their building official. Um, with regards to inspections, we're doing them two or three days a week and I've not heard any complaints from the city with regards to the work that we're doing. I, I apologize, the reason I came up was about Lionel Lakes versus Lake Elmo.
That's okay.
Sugar click.
That's all right, it's quite all right, we're actually, I'm actually glad to see you here, if the council has any more questions. Uh, Scott is present, feel free to ask away, Scott, don't go anywhere yet.
I wanna know one thing, why is it taking so long attorneys over? I'm gonna say one thing before you go any further, I've been doing this for forty-five years. I have never seen a permit take six to eight weeks. You need to have request your information all in one shot, not have them submitted, then resubmit it again. I, this is something I know and I know very well. So I'm gonna tell you right now, either you get this figured out, because I was so mad last year at this time when I was building my house. I submitted my information that you required for your, my heat loss and heat gain calculations. I filled out your form. That wasn't good enough, I fought that all the way to the end of my inspection. I've been doing it for forty-five years, I know more about it than you guys do. You are questioning what I do for a living, now you're doing the same thing to these builders, it's gotta stop. You cannot request any more stringent cold compliances than the state area laws. If you are, you're going above and beyond. It's gotta stop. I've worked in every city from the loose, the elder league. And I have never had as much problem or heard as many problems as we are dealing with right now, here. It's gotta stop. This needs to get turned over and turned over now. We have builders that are gonna leave because they don't wanna deal with this anymore. And that is what continues to bring our tax revenues into this city and lowers our taxes for our previous residents. It's gotta stop. Plain and simple. I fought for you guys to start with and I am so inferior, I'm just furious right now with how all this is going on. It's gotta stop. And if it means you gotta work ten hours a week to get them turned out in time, God, you better start doing it, because we're paying you a lot of money. It's gotta end.
Okay, any other comments, let it counsel?
I haven't heard the other side. Um, I haven't done any specific research on any individual permits other than the ten or twelve permits that Sheila asked me to research after I met with Mayor Johnson.
Well, thirteen, but one of whom we couldn't count since twelve.
The, uh, the outcome of that analysis was that we're, we've turned on, turned around all those permits within nine business days, now I need to clarify what that means. The clock isn't counting against us when we are waiting for something. Now, your concerns that you voiced, I would like to chat with you further about offline and understand what your experience was, because I don't want people to have that experience.
This council needs to know everything, I am not gonna be one go in the back room and have a discussion with anybody in it. These gentlemen make the same decision that I'm gonna make and they're gonna have to hear the same thing. It doesn't matter. It does not take six to eight weeks to turn a permit around, I don't care who you are, City of Minneapolis, I can have a permit in two days. And their code for students is a lot more than the state is and a lot more that you're turning over.
The. I understand that we're working on the same code, if we don't have information, I can't move ahead with issuing a permit.
You have asked for information, you're given that information, you turn it back and say we need further information on something else that wasn't even asked for in the first time.
I, I accept that that was a challenge that we had last year and I believe we've corrected that since that time.
But obviously it hasn't, you got thirteen complaints and there's more coming in all the time.
Well, I, I would like to make all of you aware that, um, the second to the last paragraph in our con- paragraph in our contract. States that if there are complaints received by the city or city council that they're to be forwarded to us in writing with specific details so that I can research and respond to those complaints. If I don't get addresses or I don't get contractors or I don't get dates or I don't get permit numbers, how can I possibly respond to a complaint about. Those guys do this or those guys don't do that if I don't know what the facts are. And I would like to be able to respond to those concerns, but if I don't hear about it and if I'm not aware of them, if I'm not, they're not communicating to me, I can't respond to them.
I would be emailing you all the time. And I'm just being honest.
Well, so we, one of the things we need to discern is.
For me to, to delegate one of these people here to do that, I think they have better things to do.
One of the things that we need to discern is whether it's a complaint about the code or whether it's a complaint about attitudes or timeliness or those kinds of things. If it's about the code and, and Mayor Johnson, I suggested this to you when we spoke when we met. If someone calls you and says they're making me do, fill in the blank, doesn't matter what, the response question probably should be something like. Yeah, are they asking you to do something that's not in the state building code? And if their response is, well, no, but, and fill in the blank, then I'm doing what you asked me to do, what you, what you pay me to do, what you expect me to do is to protect. Your residents from builders who have a natural incentive to cut corners and, uh, do things less expensively. So that they can put additional money in their pockets, that's why we have a building code and why we have licensed contracting in Minnesota.
Does the code state that an engineer stamp? If it's accepted engineered stamp on anything, footings, engineered wall racing, if that's acceptable. Why is it that you're asking for other engineering or you're saying that doesn't meet code? Engineering, first and foremost, those guys designed these things.
I understand what you're saying.
And engineer stamp.
It's important, it's important for me to have the details because there are frequent situations where an engineer will engineer a specific part, maybe a porch. That is on an elevated footing and that porch needs to be engineered by the state code. And then there might be another area that requires engineering because they wanna do a twelve inch wall next to a garage door. And so we get the engineering for the porch, we go through our wall racing review and determine that that's not gonna work, they either need to come up with an engineered system. Or get engineering approval for that section of the house. So without knowing the details, again, I can't respond, but there might be three or four different places on a house that need engineering. Because it isn't able to comply with the, uh, prescriptive requirements of the code. I think.
I got the, I got a recommendation.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm just, I'm scratching the numbers and it says here since January first, two thousand nineteen, we've paid in min spec. Uh, just. Just chied fifty-one thousand and we still have almost a half year left to go. I'm looking at that cost and the cost to have one back in house again, there isn't that big of a difference.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see us do is just try to get out of the contract here and move forward with, with somebody in house and maybe even working with another local city to, you know, to make full use of that person, but. I think that's the direction we should try to go.
With that being said, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Becker, wouldn't you have any information as far as an in-house, I mean, I, I'd love to see it too. I believe Ms. Selman mentioned it as well. That it's just not feasible and like.
Well, here's, here's the numbers right here, you're looking at.
I do look at the numbers, but you're looking at in-house dental and then.
Oh, yeah.
On top of that too.
Yeah, right, exactly, you're looking at sixty-eight grand plus thirty-eight grand for benefits and stuff.
That's paying thirty-two eighty-two and a half.
That's, yeah, that, that's.
Okay, but, but this figure that you're seeing here and Mr. Becker, you can, sixty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars. You're nice, you, you're not gonna find somebody for that, they're all gonna want a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Oh, no, 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 building inspectors don't make that kinda money.
Would you, uh, this is where in our morning meeting I said, uh, this firm service would elaborate, because that's true.
Yep, so at the, for the salary for an in-house building official is sixty-eight thousand two sixty-five. You would add on top of that approximately thirty-seven thousand for the benefits of health and dental and all that, so you could combine those numbers together. Where it can be advantageous to have a builder or building official in-house, which I was for it as well. It becomes challenging when or not cost-effective when you have a dip down in the economy because you're still paying the salary and that thirty-seven, approximately thousand dollars in benefits. Even if you don't have any permits or things coming in. I mean, obviously everyone knows when we experienced that a decade ago, um, so that is a negative to it, there are positives in both sides of things.
That's it, that's what it's gonna, right now we're over fifty grand and we're not done with this year. And next decade, if you almost, if you almost, if you almost double that, it's actually more than having one house.
But.
Right, and we cannot make, by state statute, make money off that position bringing in, we can use some things to be offset, whether it's like office supplies or other, um. Things from the community development department being coded to there, but we can't actually bring in excess amount of money and use that for something else. So we have to make sure that we're appropriating the money and funds.
But there's also one thing you have, you have vacuum breakers, R P C testing, that has to be mandated, that has to be done every year. That's if you rebuild every year, has to be inspected every year, you also have our rental properties that need to be inspected to make sure that they're up to code. I mean, these are things that the building official can offset their time with.
That's a hundred percent correct.
So I mean, it's not like, and then we could switch them to do those things, nothing states that we have to do it on July first on these inspections. We can move those dates to when we do have a slowdown. And ironically, the company I work for, our busiest time is in the winter time. Because we do all this roughing up our groundworms and everything prior to the winter and we're busy and all went along the way. This has been the worst year in the world for us to do construction, we've been slow the last two months. Because of the weather.
City of Wyoming is starting a building inspector right now, starting phase twenty-six nine.
The inspector or a building official, we do need to have a building official, not just an inspector, but. Uh, what we can do if there is, um, the wanting to see if we would be able to have someone, if we know what those costs are, even if we're not bringing in permit fees. How that does impact the city and the budget, we could post to see what comes, to see if there's, um. We get any valid app applicants that are trained and have that, um, you know, we don't wanna get that.
We had this before in, isn't it? Again, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't it, one of those applicants wanting like a hundred thousand plus?
We did interview for this position before hiring min spec, um, we, I think we almost made it. Barroom interviews with them, John, make sure that we're gonna get someone that was gonna work out, um, everyone that came in was either extremely green. Or they wanted a lot of money in eighties, nineties, hundred thousand range.
So eighty to a hundred thousand dollars is what they wanted, but I mean, it's, it's crazy when it's true, I mean.
We did make it out.
There's proof in the pudding.
To someone who declined it because we couldn't meet their needs.
Oh, I have a question, something that someone said, I thought you said that. We can get out of contract with min spec as long as we both agree. Did you say that?
So there's a possibility.
Okay.
If we both agree.
If we both agree.
Well, if they agree to release us from the contract. Right now we are not breaching the contract and we do not have an out clause in the contract.
So how long is that contract?
December twenty twenty.
So there's a catch right there too.
Not saying that we could get out of it, but.
Over that higher, why would we agree with that all?
No, no. And if we ever did do another contract in the future, we need an out. And the next one, if we chose that, we are hiring our own or whatever, we obviously need to. Cover the bases for the city, I don't know who would ever put that in place, but that was quite stupid.
Well, something that should be tabled to another meeting to.
Well, I think, you know, we have Scott here right now and if, if we can't get out of this contract, we're stuck here with this. But I'm gonna say right now, Scott, we gotta do something, I don't care, you better start getting your checklist in line so that these answers get answered prior to this. Because min stream down the road, these builders, I don't care, I'm not, I'm not arguing for. The greatest builder and the, the worst builder in the world, I'm not arguing for you to run, I'm arguing for all of it. This needs to get corrected and corrected now. I mean. Like I said, I've designed heating systems my whole life, I know how to do a heat loss and heat gain calculation. I know how to do a heat loss and heat gain calculation. You're asking for my paperwork, how I got those numbers? That's telling me you don't know what you're looking for. And if that's the case, you better start trusting the people who are doing the work. And that's just, that's just one example.
I mean, did you list yourself as the contractor?
Yes, I did.
I'm, I'm wondering if the, the plan reviewer didn't know that you work in the industry, and assumed that you were just a homeowner who made up the numbers while-
No, I called them and I told them, and they still wanted their, they wanted my homework.
Okay.
And I'm going to tell you right now, doing a heat loss and heat gain calculation, if you got a computer and you got the program, it takes two minutes to do it.
But I'm guessing there's only one in a thousand people that actually know how to do that.
But if I'm one that is happening to, what about the next contractor that they don't know about? And it calls himself Jeff Johnson Heating, they don't know who Jeff Johnson is from Adam, but he knows what he's doing.
But the expectation is that their, that contractor is going to provide appropriate documentation.
But what I'm saying is, these guys have a building license. They have to go every year for code compliance, and they have to have so many hours a year to do it. If they don't pass the course, they don't get their contractor license renewed.
There's no test at the end of continuing education?
I take it every year, I know what's there.
The, uh, there are two builders here in Iscany that are still resisting the requirements for co-, uh, wall bracing, and it's a frustration that we have.
But are you requesting that because of your standards? Or are you requesting that from the state's?
Minnesota State Building Code.
But it's funny, because I just had another building official tell me that you're going way over and above and beyond on that.
I would love to have a conversation with whoever that is, because it's-
No, I'm not putting them in the slot, I'm just telling you.
We are only addressing what the Minnesota State Building Code requires. It is the minimum requirement of the code.
But I'm just saying, that if that's the case, that needs to be regularly done and over with. And that needs to be done on plan approval.
Right.
And all these questions that they submit this, and then they end up getting resubmitted, because this doesn't, this wasn't involved, or you missed this, or one inspector passes this, and then the next inspector comes in and doesn't pass that, because it's already been passed, you can't do that.
And that's what's happening.
Our hotel?
Our, our hotel would be one right now that would come in here and tell us that Minspec was garbage.
Well, I respectfully disagree. They appealed one of our determinations to the state fire marshal's office, and in fact, they were overruled, because the, the hotel came as modules that were inspected by the modular building group at the state. And the boxes that came here didn't have a bottom. They were just floor trusses, or floor joists showing. But the fire code says, and the building code says, if you have a concealed combustible space in type 5B construction, you're required either to sprinkle that annular space, interstitial space, in between those two floor systems, floor ceiling system, or you have to fill it up with insulation. And they built the boxes, the box on the bottom, the box on the top, and there was no insulation in the middle, and one of our inspectors caught it. Either you have to sprinkle it or insulate it. And they were quite frustrated by that, I would agree. And we had a conference call, state fire marshal's office, the state building code's office, the fire inspector who reviewed all that stuff, and the conclusion was, Scott's right. Billing has to be either sprinkled in that space in between the floors, or they have to blow in insulation, and they had to do that. They built the stair tower on the west side of the building three times before they got the fire separation correct in order to protect occupants leaving that building from the, uh, the stairway. It, that was not, um, that was not an issue of us going over and above. It was an issue of the contractor not doing the job correctly any of the three times in that instance.
But the problem was it was passed once.
No, 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 the stair tower was, it was rejected three times.
Not the stair tower.
What are we talking about?
I'm talking about the insulation part, between the, between the floors. It was passed once, and I, because I know the gentleman that insulated it, and it passed.
He put fiberglass bats in, is that correct?
I don't remember what he did.
My understanding was he put in fiberglass, one layer of fiberglass bats, which does not bring insulation level up to the underside of the floor joists and above.
But I understand that, but it was passed once, and then another-
Neither one of you inspectors passed it once, I do recall hearing the same thing. But one of your inspectors passed it once, and a different one came in a second time and failed.
So I will be happy to check on the details of that.
But I-
And I keep looking over your shoulder, because our fire chief is actually in the audience.
But-
So I was wondering if there was any merit to what you were saying, and-
Yeah, I absolutely agree. Uh, dealt with that code, insulation, how to build the cavity. And just something to consider, previous discussions were in regards to how builders, uh, I forget how you worded it, but their natural way is to find corners that have to increase their bottom line. And then this insulator, and I know him, and I know he is a very solid, uh, insulator. Uh, he's a, he's a good man, but his, his job is to make his business money. And he knows, I would argue that he knows that code as well. It's a pretty familiar code that you have to fill that cavity.
But my point was on that, was it was passed once and then failed.
That's-
That is my point, I'm not, I'm-
I will check on that.
I'm glad you did your diligence, I'd rather see it right than wrong, but it shouldn't have been passed the first time.
And it's certainly conceivable that the contractor told the, the insulation contractor to just put one layer of 10-inch fiberglass bats in the walls, and we're in the ceiling, and we're good to go, even though that wasn't what was required, so.
But my point was, it was passed once and then failed. If you were a builder, and somebody did that to you, no matter what, you'd be able to rate it, or to-
I will most certainly find out the details of that and report that to the county.
But like I said, I think we need to start turning these around. And if, you know, if we do not get these things turned around faster, we're going to have another conversation, and I don't think it's going to go well with anyone.
We're talking about planner view?
Yeah, I'll admit it.
So Sheila, the report that I responded to you with, all residential planner views are under 10 days, they were nine or eight days or less?
Yeah, that's correct, and I just did a sampling, because I do not have specific addresses for the complaints. So I just did a sampling of addresses that I knew had percent permits, and they all within that mandate.
And Matt's told me three or four times, the decks and, um, basement finishes in the small simple projects are coming back in two days, two to three days.
So every complaint that I get, I'll direct it in your direction, and then you can, you can do it in some direction.
And I have asked, and I've gotten some of the clients to split homes and those, I have asked, please give me the specific address, and the response is all of them. So, I mean, can pull off their permits, but that's going to take a really long time.
Well, they need to be more specific, otherwise quit crying.
Well, let's just, I guess at this point, we're in a contract agreement with you right now. This is, you do know we're serious about going to do something here.
I do.
So with that being said, do you understand the severity of what's going on here?
I understand you're quite concerned, yes.
And we can't, we can't have these turnarounds any longer than they need to be.
If I, if, if this city, and/or this council, or myself, start losing builders, because they're not fed up with Minspec, that's a huge problem. Because you're taking away my headspace.
If, if I could just suggest that the last mayor informed me into his term that if those builders don't want to build to the code, we don't need a building in Iscany. And I'm not saying that you're wrong, I'm not saying that he was wrong, but that was the direction that I had, uh, previously. We will say, I am not enforcing anything more than the minimum standard in the Minnesota State Building Code.
I think the requirement may be that communication break down between you and the people that are actually doing inspections.
I agree.
Yep.
It sounds like this is the biggest issue.
I just, I think you are a very knowledgeable man, I think you want your business to thrive, but I think those working for you may be lacking that. Your, your communication is spot on, but theirs is not.
I will look forward to receiving any additional complaints that come in, so that I can respond in time if I may.
Fair enough, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Scott.
I'm sorry for picking up half of your, no, that's okay.
I forgot the name, but I hope you understand, I, I'm not stupid to this.
No, I understand, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to item nine, city council agenda request the IAJOFD joint powers agreement discussion. Chief Al Jankovic.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, I believe this lot for the fire district tonight was in regards to fire code. Is that correct, in adopting it or not?
Correct.
Okay. So I did some research since I was added to your agenda. Uh, most of my research came through the Minnesota State, uh, Fire Marshal's Office, sorry. Uh, and that is in regards to the Minnesota State Fire Code, and how it is adopted by municipalities such as the city of Iscany. They quoted me Minnesota Statute 299F dot 011, which states that the Minnesota State Fire Code applies throughout the state and in all Minnesota political subdivisions and municipalities. It applies to all structures, residential, commercial, private, and public, whether or not a municipal township or county government has adopted the code. So I think that my, my motive or my mission here tonight is not for the city to adopt the current fire code, but taking this one step further, I wonder if the city of Iscany, and I honestly don't know if this is accurate or not, if we have the correct documentation to appoint the Iscany Fire District as your fire and fire code representative. Since the city of Iscany branched off from a municipal fire department to the fire district, I don't know that all these documents were completed. And I am concerned that there could be a loose end here, where if we were ever challenged down the road, that this would be something that we would trip over. Because we don't have the fire district directed as your acting fire department, and officials being myself and the other officers and firefighters. It says under the fire code, "Who is authorized to enforce the Minnesota State Fire Code?" It says, "The fire code official, who is the fire chief, fire department representative, authorized by the fire chief or other authority specifically designated by ordinance or regulation, that is charged with the administration and enforcement of the code." Speaking with Scott out in the hallway before this meeting tonight, he made me aware that your agreement with Minspec involves some language in regards to enforcing the fire code, which I think is a good move for the city of Iscany, because Iscany Fire District currently doesn't have staffing to do all the things that Minspec is doing for the city right now, including enforcement. However, if something came up where you needed timely and specific fire department overview, I don't know that we couldn't be challenged by somebody in court, if it ever came to that, if we were to try to enforce pieces of the Minnesota State Fire Code.
So I have a commercial piece of property that was challenging Minspec's fire coding. And I did reach out to you and ask you about that. It wasn't necessarily that they have, uh, fire, um, I'm going to stumble, word, fire resistant, there we go.
Hmm.
Walls and every internal wall that they had within their building.
Hmm.
And you wouldn't even touch it. Because you said, "I don't have a light to stand on, I refuse to answer these questions," and I completely understood, and, and I respected what you said. Would this be one of those things you're talking about?
Well, that was before I received this documentation from the state. And yes, that is one of those situations, and I could list, honestly, I could list 10 of them in the last, well, this, this year, we'll see. Instances where I was asked to help with some sort of a situation, be it, uh, somebody who has a concern about, um, somebody drilling a hole in a door at a condominium in the city of Iscany, and being concerned that they're, um, breaching the, the fire resistant rating of the door, to, uh, wall hangings, uh, commercial business, to a building that should have been, um, condemned in, in a very timely manner. Uh, that, that I didn't know this piece of this statute, and that I could step in. And the state fire marshal's office even offers us boilerplate, um, documents that we can use to enforce this with the help of law. We can enforce these codes, and we could condemn a building. And we could go in and say, "You can't drill that hole in that door." Right now, I'm, I'm just stating these statutes as an awareness piece.
So, so what are you looking for the council to do for you, chief?
I'm wanting to make sure that if we don't have some sort of an ordinance or, or documentation that states the Iscany Fire District is your fire representative, or your fire department, uh, that we should consider drafting that and putting it in place.
Are you willing to draft that, sir?
Absolutely.
Draft it.
I say draft it, okay.
Uh, Mayor, I would like to review exactly the documentation that chief has, just so I can be on the same page. I know he was talking with, um, Misselman on some other things, which I don't know what was a result of that. I do know somewhere in code, we do reference the Minnesota State Fire Code, and if that gives you the power and authority to do X, Y, Z, we may already have that. So we'll need to review that, and then we'll also have probably an attorney get involved, just to make sure if we're putting something in the code, one, it doesn't conflict another area, it's not redundant, um, and to make sure that there's something that we have to do specifically, so.
So Chief Jankovic, if you could just connect the dots with Ms. Wood and, and Misselman, we'll make sure we're not redundant, that, that's, you know, and if not drafted.
And, and again, my, my concerns are that when we form the fire district, and the city of Iscany is one-seventh owner of the fire district, does that automatically make us you? Because I know in some other instances, we're dealing right now with the fire board level, it doesn't.
I would think it would be just like a contraction.
Yeah, I would think so too, but-
Would it be, I would think so, I don't know.
I've been dealing with this question lately, with other issues, and-
As, as my, well, as Councilman Lundin sits on the fire board and I'm his alternative, I actually sat in, uh, Councilman Lundin was absent, so I, I'm on the same page with him than you guys are. So this is something he's been battling and battling and battling and battling, and the guy's getting blue in his face. So right away, I stood up and said, "Hey, I'll be the first one, come to council me, talk to the council. Guarantee you, they lean your way." Because he needs to not battle, we need to just say, "Chief Jankovic, you're right."
We're coming, both were butts.
Yeah, correct.
Exactly, correct, we don't want to be challenged in, in court ever. And there's a, a lot of useful ordinances in the state fire code. There's a lot of things that can help protect us from some of those people who are careless. And like the chief said earlier, with the noise ordinance, we need a light to stand on.
Right.
And I think we need, our greets.
Possibly people that are delivering these voices.
Absolutely.
So, good to read more.
So I just have a question, um, so if the request was to make an amendment to the joint powers agreement, is that where you're looking for the language to be included in?
No.
Are you, okay, so that's-
That's a different subject, and I don't know if we have time to talk about that, but what I'm talking about is a rule or an ordinance or a resolution that defines the fire district being your-
Okay, and that's the thing that you're working with Misselman on, correct?
Correct.
Okay, let, let's get to the agenda request, um, and we'll continue to work with him on that.
On that issue, and if it's not aired, we'll, we'll draft it and get it done.
Thank you, sir.
Let's move on to what we do have, the joint powers agreement, if you don't mind.
Is that what's on the agenda?
Yeah.
That's what your request is. So you kind of surprised me with the-
I agree with what I said initially, but I can, I can go with that too. So what, what we're discussing here is an issue that came up a few months ago, several months ago, with the fire district billing for its services. Ever since Chief Lester Peterson, two chiefs ago, was the fire chief, we have billed for suppression. Our, uh, procedure is every time we pump water, we charge a $250 service charge, the fire district does. If we pump water, or if we have an operational period for eight hours or more, so if, if we're on scene and we're dealing with this fire for eight hours or more, we have a fee schedule that mirrors the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources fee schedule for their wildland firefighting, that we apply towards the hours we spend fighting that fire in our coverage area for eight hours or more. That has been challenged. Uh, after a recent bill was submitted for an over eight-hour operational period, it has been challenged by somebody in one of our townships. And some things are being noticed, again, on the same, uh, theme as my concerns about not having the fire district, um, mentioned or documented as your fire department. We are learning that we need to define our billing structure and efforts to collect unpaid bills, uh, in our joint powers agreement and in our policy. So the start of this whole process would- So the start of this whole process would be to amend our joint powers agreement, which would define that we charge for services. Now, my, I'm following suit from, from many years ago, that's, that's just how we've done this, so that's, that's how I have proceeded through these service charges to date. But I'm learning that if we don't have this service charge defined, then it could be challenged in court. My opinion was, we're a business, we're a political subdivision, we're a business made up of six townships in one city, and businesses sell services. So in my opinion, it's unquestionable that we would charge a $250 fee for our services, much like the city charges, special assessments or fees for a water and sewer or a ticket from the policeman or, or, or. But apparently, there's language that you guys have in place that state these fees that we don't have in place yet. So in order for us to put these, this language in place, it would take an amendment of our joint powers agreement. To amend our joint powers agreement, our joint powers agreement is the legal document that binds the six townships in the city. For us to amend that, we need a unanimous decision by all owners of this joint powers agreement. So I think this is the last discussion we're going to have about this.
And where do the rest of them stand on it?
We don't know yet.
However, I think this is the last discussion we're going to have on this.
Where do they stand?
Well, he could try to tell us a lot of things, but there's a couple certain people there that they, they're.
And I would concur with Councilman Lundin, so.
They're like the washboard your grandmother used to use when she washed her clothes.
So the, the purpose of me being on this, on this agenda tonight is to just discuss this with you all, to get some feedback. If you have any questions about it, if you have any opinions, it's going to go to vote at the joint powers board meeting tomorrow.
I think, in my opinion, I think they should be able to charge for it.
Absolutely.
How's, how do the other departments throughout the state, are as volunteer departments going?
Excellent question. I did a, a random survey, I sent it out on some email blasts that I, that I have access to statewide. I received feedback from around 35 departments. Right now, it, it's at about 52%, I believe, charged in some way or form. My, my question was simply, do you charge for services? I gave a brief reason why I'm asking, but it, it was pretty cut and dry. Do you charge for services, yes or no? I wrote some notes on the responses, but it was all over the board. Some people charge for hazmat only, some people charge for not only hazmat fires, but also auto extrication and bags of floor dry if they're at a car wreck and they spill oil, and some people don't charge for deployments to New York.
Right now, though, you're saying a $250 fee and if it's over eight hours and you charge accordingly, the DNR, so that's what you're currently doing.
Exactly right.
So I don't see anything wrong with that.
Any call that the fire district responds to where we do not pump water, we don't charge.
Medicals?
And I said, don't require us to.
I think you should charge for that too.
So I, I don't.
There should be a fee structure.
I mean, they're, they collect them, well, there already is, but they just need to put it in.
Put it in, right.
Right.
So the arguments are, and I won't take up too much of your time, say there's a fire on this end of the county where somebody is potentially doing something illegal.
Yeah.
Maybe they're, maybe they're doing bad things like cooking trucks, or maybe they, who knows what, you can all think of this horrible scenario where somebody's reckless and they start something big on fire, where we're there with our resources for over eight hours, multiple trucks, up to, we have 30 people on our department, up to 30 people.
Mutual aid, possibly.
Mutual aid. We've had calls where we've had the dispatch heavy equipment contractors get a backhoe and excavator in there to help us take apart the buildings. Those bills can rack up quick. The little lady, and if I'm offending anybody, pardon me, that lives on the other side of our fire district that is struggling to pay her bills and counts every penny and doesn't have an extra $10, why should she be burdened with this guy's service charges? His extra amount of, of service usage, exactly.
But you're mocking the DNR price list, and that would go to him.
You're, her. That, that's a great point. The, the Minnesota DNR sees it suitable to charge these fees.
To him.
To him, to anybody. You have a campfire in the Boundary Waters that burns 800 acres, you're getting a bill for a lot of aircraft and boots on the ground and hot shotters, all of that.
Like campground boy.
The, the person that's responsible for that campfire that got out of control. Why are we different than the Minnesota DNR? I don't think we should be. So the other side of it is that, and I'll scoot this along, people are, are saying that those are our tax dollars. The fire district is.
We're already paid for it through monthly care, property taxes.
Exactly. So that's the other side of the coin. Are we 100% tax funded, or do we supplement our extended operational periods with a service fee?
When you sit down with these two, obviously you see the consensus of the council. He's on the right page. I think he should charge for his services.
It would just need to be brought before council if this, if they need to have council, we can't take any action here tonight, but if you need council approval for that, we would amend the joint powers agreement and send it through council as a business item for approval.
But you see where the consensus is going, Chief.
We got six other entities that have.
I'm going to be honest with you, right now, they're pretty much on the same page. They actually, I think.
And I would agree.
More what I'd like to do is I would bill them for accidents, but.
I'd like to bill for accidents too, I'd like to bill for medical, I think you should be billing for everything. But that's my opinion and Councilman Lundin's opinion, it could be all of our opinions, but, I mean, I did hear Councilman Bergman even said that.
So Chief Jankovic, if you would like to maybe draft what you'd like, what we need to change to be, so we can review that in the potential for it to go forward, we can work on that.
I will do that pending tomorrow night's vote. If one person votes against this tomorrow night, it's.
Perfect.
That's another question, you know, some insurance companies do pay for these fees.
Yes.
Oh geez.
They do.
Absolutely.
I, I knew an insurance company had one, you know, what kind of policy, I'm sure, they probably all vary a little bit from one to the next.
A few instances in the past, briefly, we ran into people who were underinsured and then have to be responsible for, and we've also ran into people who have turned in the invoice.
Got paid for it and pocketed it.
Been paid for it from their insurance company and not paid us.
So you have to deal directly with them, not with insurance companies?
Correct. I jumped through all the hoops and they said the debt was between us and the.
That's, I didn't, that's part I didn't know.
So our current makeup has no means of collecting, so that was the second part of this. If we are going to document that we're charging, how are we going to collect that debt?
And Chief Jankovic, I don't mean to cut you short, but I got to.
Well, I have one more question, why can't.
Oh, Christ.
Why can't you run, at least the medical saving, why can't you run a, like, I run my hospital, hey, no, why, why can't you run like I run my office where I run it to the insurance and the insurance company pays me?
That was one recommendation by our attorney, is when we submit the invoice to try to have checks paid towards that claim linked to us, either include our name on the bill, have it be John Doe, comma, Isanty Fire District, or have something on a memo, but that is up to the discretion of the insurance company. We don't have any teeth that I know of where we can demand that.
Well, we don't demand it, we just submit the bill. I mean, when I, when I bill an insurance company, I bill it on behalf of the patient. Yeah, I, I bill it on behalf of the patient, so we bill it on behalf of the.
What they do is going to be a different thing than what you're requesting, though, and obviously he's getting.
Mayor and council, if I may interject.
We have to get.
We do have to move on or we for sure won't have enough time, but we can, honestly, if I come back at the next, can leave the whole meeting.
But Chief, just know that this council's behind you. That's what I want.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
I haven't said anything, but that's because they all said it for me, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good night.
Moving on to 10, draft a future city staffing plan. Ms. Wood.
Mayor and council, we did have a staffing plan that was approved back in 2016, which was from 2016 to 2020, and as you can see on page three of this item, was that old plan. What I have done is, but with all of our staff, we have revised the plan as that was nearing its end, and as you could probably notice, we did not follow a lot of the staffing plans, recommendations that were on there. So I've gone through everything, I've attached a year or two when we would add staff going forward. A lot of this follows population and workload increases, as you can imagine. One of the things that is soft date is when we hit the approximate population of 7,500, there are some points of change when that does need to increase staff load, but that year, about 2028, that could shift depending on how growth is. The only thing that is different of the staffing plan than what was presented as part of the preliminary budget for the 2020 is increasing the part-time HR, Assistant Deputy Deputy City Clerk to full-time. That was actually in the old plan to be done, I believe, in 2017. On page two, it does show how that affects the budget, which is $31,439. Staff is asking for, if there's any questions or concerns from council, otherwise this would go to council to be approved as our next five-year staffing plan.
Mr. Becker, you looked over this, this is all financially feasible and no quarrels in your department, sir?
Correct.
I would say go forward.
Yep.
Any objections, comments, concerns?
The movement in part, part, real quick, public works and all their, always in our staff, so that, that would be adding additional.
Oh, what we have for public works, well, actually, what we have for public works is to increase, uh, public works seasonal, so that helps with mowing, so we can alleviate them to do higher tasks of our technicians, and then adding in the tech too would be in 2023.
Okay.
Now, the only thing that would change is in public works, if we were to go with a mechanical plan or something major change, this would be kind of the only way to restructure at that time.
Okay. That answers my question.
All right, the next item is number 11 for legal service proposals. All of council has received, all the proposals that we received, we had four that had proposals for civil, two that had for civil and prosecution, one that had prosecution only. Staff went through, as Chief Myers, myself, and Assistant City Minister Lorsen went through all of them, we rated them on a number of factors of how it best fit the needs of Isanty, as well as looking into the cost of what they are as well. What staff is recommending is to look at one firm for prosecution, which would be GDO Law, we felt that they fit the best needs and the actual other two did not. And for civil, we're recommending to look further at Flaherty and Hood, Ratrick, Roswick and Maloney, and Barnaguzzi and Steffen. Those three meet the needs of Isanty and the others we felt that did not. What I'm looking for is direction at this time of how we move forward to interview. There are two options, one of them is to have a special workshop where we have them do about a 30-minute presentation to all of council, we need to pick a special date for that. The second option is, and then you would make your recommendation for civil and prosecution. The other option is to maybe have staff and just the mayor meet with all of them, make their recommendation, still council would be approving.
My recommendation is to have you and Mr. Becker look at these applicants, interview them, bring your, bring your recommendations to council, and at that point, we can make a vote on it. As I know personally, I don't have the time to sit there through all these interviews.
The mayor's involved in that too, I heard.
I think it would be advantageous for council to have the mayor involved. I think that besides staff, he does have interactions with legal, you all can as well, but if you're looking for a representative to, on behalf of council, I, I would recommend that the mayor sit in on those.
That's fine. I'm in favor of that.
That's fine.
I'm in favor of it too. We'll do the staff and the, anybody have any objections to that?
Nope. If any one of us can make it.
So be it.
Be it.
Sounds good. Staff will work on setting up those schedules, I'll email those out to you, you're all are aware, if you have three or more, then we'll set up, we'll notice it as a cover meeting.
The only point that I made in closing to that was, Ms. Wood deals with our civil matters and Chief Myers deals with our prosecution, so I would totally.
That's fine.
Lean on, on them to.
Yep.
And myself, because I, I do have many.
Yeah, I believe, I think Meyer, Chief Myers, if he has time, it wouldn't be bad to be in both.
I, I believe that as well.
I would ask for Chief Myers as well as Katie Brooks, because she deals with the labor and personnel things as well.
That's fine, that's what I'm just saying, is I, I, staff can handle this.
Thank you.
And then bring it to us.
Moving on to item 12, small cell wireless facility guidelines.
Okay, so these are, this is recommended by the lead, so there was new legislation passed that there is ability for carriers to be putting 5G small cell devices, so to say, in the right-of-way area, so these are on, on different poles, different things, and what the lead recommended is that the city adopt an ordinance that has some guidelines on there, so they can't just be put on all angles of buildings and things, so it looks really like an eyesore, so that's what this recommendation is.
I think we should move forward with that.
Correct.
Any objections to it? All right, moving on to 13, doing business with Isanty, Mr. Becker.
This is an update that's required twice per year, and there are no entities to, to update their council at this time.
Awesome. Moving on to 14, property taxes received first half 2019, Mr. Becker as well.
This is an informational item that has previously gone to the finance committee. There was nothing shocking in this, percent of delinquent, delinquent taxes collected is up and.
No red flags?
No red flags and otherwise it's in line with, with historical numbers.
Any comments on that? And we did say, if he's seen a red flag, to wave it, he's not, so we're doing good. D15, 2020 budget un-savings, Mr. Becker?
I alluded to this at the last budget workshop, health insurance renewal rate through the COOP came back at seven and a half percent, we had budgeted 15%, so we'll see some savings on that, and I just need to, just need to understand the consensus of the committee that we intend to, to go forward with that.
Move forward, so. All right. I'm sorry, we have the options on shop, we're on that, right? We.
We do, but we do have to have the buy-in of all of our bargaining agreements as well, because we can offer two, one inside the plan that we have and one outside, so staff is going to be working on presenting that option if there is a favorability of majority we then would bring to council and share that.
All right. Fingers crossed. Uh, we do have added items. Ms. Wood, there is a 16, we call this a mayor council expenditure.
So mayor, this is something that you had shared, there is the times where mayors have, the mayor may have office expenditures that they're looking to do, whether that be able to print things, use a computer here, as well as partake in different events such as the parade, and I'll let the mayor speak to what he's.
I'm currently asking for a computer in my office, and when I asked for that computer, I was told it had to be cleared by you gentlemen. I thought that was completely and utterly ridiculous.
Oh, I'm definitely against it.
There was a, there was a.
As he smiles.
There was a computer in there, former previous mayor, I don't see any reason to do, worry about it.
And, and actually, we're not spending, we're piecing my computer together, but we do have Jim Credit coming in to wipe it clear and.
So currently, we, I, I'm not aware of the mayor ever having a computer, I believe our former mayor had his own computer that he brought in. Yep, we do have, we do have a used computer that we can have wiped clean by our IT guy.
I have nothing to hide, gentlemen, so we can use the city computer, so.
What staff's looking for is the recommendation from council is if we have these items that the mayor's looking to purchase, if it's under $6.
Say, per se, if it was under $500, would you guys have an objection to me pulling that trigger?
No. Pause is, it's reasonable.
I'm not going to do anything that's going to put you guys and the city of Isanty in jeopardy, especially myself.
I just need a monthly five-page report on everything you do.
Does that say dollar amount that you kind of go by as well?
Employees do have, we have a, we have a pretty robust purchasing policy, and that is the discretion as long as it's budgeted within the $500 range.
And if it's out of my realm, believe me, I'd be the first to say, yeah, maybe we need to ask the council.
So just so you're all aware, if, if the consensus that, that is agreeable, I will be putting a resolution to council authorizing that.
I'll be reading that, don't, don't give me a run, gentlemen.
It'll be on the next upcoming agenda.
Any objections? Number 17, we do have something that we call a serving more than one board, if I'm.
Yeah, so currently, we have, I've done some work in looking into, because there's been just some questions on, it actually came up last year as well as this year, about individuals from, or citizens or residents. about individuals from, or citizens or residents being on more than one board or commission within the city. So we have park board, EDA, planning commission. And the league's stance is set by council. Council gets to determine if they want to let a person be on more than one. Now, there are certain recommendations and kind of rules that you may wanna say if it is conflict, if it's a conflict of interest. But if it's not, it really is up to the boards or the council's discretion. So I'm looking is if there's a relegation by council, if you want to have, someone have the ability to be on more than one or if we want to spread the wealth and have as many residents as we can and maybe one would be the best.
And I can cover, I'm saying that I know somebody's gonna say, well, it's kind of hard to get people on those boards. I beg to differ. Maybe on your last minute machine it was.
We're still in a relevant honor.
I agree, yeah.
It's, it's always a case of them flying off the woodwork, but.
Well, they're not flying off the woodwork, but we have the one position open. You have a lot more than that.
Yeah, I know, but I, I.
So not serving on more than one board, I don't think is fair, personally.
Council, I think, council.
Before you were elected, you were on boards.
And I got rejected.
And, and that.
And I was with them on that, too. I rejected you.
I know you did.
No, I don't see where it makes the difference to me, as far as I'm concerned. If they want to do it, I mean, at least they're showing embedded interest in the city.
Okay, so the council does have the ability to choose who they want so then we will leave it as is.
Yeah, I think, I think we use it as is because we have the ability to choose. If someone comes in and we have a candidate that they're already on a board and someone that's not, I would tend to leave it for the person that's not on a board.
Yeah, you're already deciding on a case-by-case basis anyway, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Number eighteen, citizen input audio recording. I wanted to cover this because this happened when we had a former council member that was pretty anal, that he wanted things recorded, possibly live YouTube. I wanna make sure the current council is okay with this. I personally think recording this meeting is useless. And it also takes a very long time to upload on YouTube to where citizen input is not recorded audio or, or video. I think we should audio record that.
Well, I got accused, I got accused of not wanting to be transparent because I didn't want it put on YouTube.
I'll give you a hug later to make that for.
I don't care about that, but I'll, we'll take it, but.
Fair enough.
Anyway, thanks for disturbing me. Better actually take that hug right now, but anyway.
Do we think?
Well, I think, I think recording is more than good enough. I think it's a big problematic headache for, I think Katie Brooks, aren't you aware of it?
It's, it's Katie or her assistant that does it.
Isn't it supposed to be easier now, though, after we have this sixty-thousand-dollar upgrade to our system?
It should be easier.
Okay.
It should be easier.
I think the more, the more you get out there, I think the better.
But if you're looking at the hits on these videos.
I know.
This one is a goose egg.
But as you grow.
City council, they get hits here and there, but.
A lot of our, a lot of our actual business, a lot of the actual business gets done here. I mean, there's things that we put in consent agenda that we don't ever discuss at a city council meeting and.
So you think, you think recording this meeting in city council is justified?
I think so. I mean, for me personally, when I was looking to get on the council, I mean, it was, I went back and watched this committee of the whole and it was, it was useful information for me and it helped get me up to speed and.
What about, because right now, we don't audio record or we don't video record citizen input. I don't think we should video record citizen input because you're gonna have so many grandstanding. However, audio recording, and at least they feel they're getting their voice through halfway, so to speak.
I think we should go back to audio recording. It's so much easier for the staff. And if we want to do committee of the whole, I could, I could care less one way or the other. I've got nothing to hide, but I don't.
Or no.
I think we should, you know, if people want to see my face, I'll send them a picture, you know, or, you know.
And that's, that's the point that I was trying to make, Councilman Gordon, was if we were to audio record committee of the whole and citizen input and then video record the council meeting.
Yeah, they still, still get it, I guess, yeah, yeah.
And it's less Miss, Miss Brooks has to do, correct? If we did it that way? So we're only recording the council meetings, but we're audio recording the rest.
Yeah, I agree.
Any objections?
Well, I'm just gonna go back to, I think, I'd say audio record the whole thing and skip YouTube, but that's just my opinion, so. I think we get this, I think we get many hits on the audio recording as we do on the video recording.
I couldn't answer that because I don't know and I really don't care.
Well, it used to get a lot more hits when somebody else was on the council because he was quite entertaining, if you follow what I'm saying, but now not so much.
Paul's been calling since then.
The only problem I have with just only audio recording, like, committee of the whole is people don't know our voices. They don't know who's saying what, felt a face, you know? If you're at home listening.
Sometimes these meetings, I mean, right now, we're on an hour and thirty-seven minutes. That's a lot to download.
Right.
On video.
I don't care. That's why the last time I said that there's staffing issues, we need to look at it.
And it could get easier when our new website is built, whatever that means. It's like a turbo case right now.
I, I think, if any else, I think we should be audio recording citizen input. If we're recording this committee of the whole, if it doesn't get downloaded for a few extra days, I don't like that saying in the world. So that's my opinion.
I just want the staff's opinion on this. Do you get comments from the public, preference over video versus audio?
I don't have anyone comment.
I've not had any comments on it, other than people commenting early in the year about how.
Entertaining.
We're going.
Yeah, yeah.
Other than that, there hasn't been any comments on it, but our views have dropped significantly.
Because we now actually act like grown men and we discuss things in this council, so.
I usually thought the YouTube live idea that he had was, was, I thought it was cool. I thought it'd be kind of fun to see, but I, I kind of agreed with him on more of that stuff, I guess, than.
Because somebody watching here guns is all down and.
I know.
Explains what you're saying.
That was what I said at the time, too. I know, I know, but.
I think Councilman Gordon's going for photo gen, photo gen. Tom's gonna be a war son.
He did just take his family photos and they did look pretty good, so.
They did look good. I'd like, I'd like to add something else at the end of this group discussion.
Okay, so.
We have one more, though. So consensus is, we're just gonna leave committee of the whole and, and the council record it and we'll start audio recording citizen input.
Okay, I, because we have citizen input before the actual meeting in the order that it is, I'm just going to put it by resolution on consent on the next council meeting, that we will be audio recording it just to make that formal.
Sound good. We have one last one, number nineteen, public health TZD grant.
Okay, so you should have an email before you. This just came in. This is from an individual at the Santa Claus Public Health. They, she's the coordinator of the toward zero-desk coalition and grant manager. And one of the things that they need to do is present to councils or boards because of the grant that they receive to let them know how the initiative is going. And what she's requesting is she would like to give an update about that program and about ten minutes of council's time at the September seventeenth city council meeting to give a brief background on TZD and what's been happening locally.
Sounds good to me.
Councilman Lundin will be absent for that. He's in Hawaii. But the rest of us will be here and will very much so entertain them.
FaceTime us.
Yeah, we should require that. Should require that. Shouldn't we, there, Councilman Collison?
Yeah. What I'd like to add, I'd like to see Hert and Rick look into possibly going back to building that amphitheater in Bluebird Park. I'd like to see us entertain possibly doing that again.
I do know that that was part of the original plans when that was being developed.
Yep, and I know it was, too. And I also know there is plans for it already, drawn up, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe there are, and the whole there.
I would like to really entertain that, and this is nothing for myself. This is for community. We could be holding another, another dance out at Bluebird Park with that being a stage set up on it. We could have our local churches come out and do Sunday services out there. If we ever went through with the city in lights, parking lights in the park, whatever, that can all be utilized out there for something there.
Could be running the wedding, weddings.
Writing, renting, renting it all for wedding venues.
We could do a movie in the park.
Movie in the park, yep. I mean, there's all sorts of things that we can do with this thing.
I agree.
And cost money.
I agree.
But I do know, I do know that we should look at what we can do.
Radar.
Huh?
Put it back on the radar.
Put it back on the radar. Maybe we could entertain, Bolton may get us an idea of what they think it's gonna cost. Mr. Becker can look at to see how we could finance it, how we could come up with the money for it. This is a community.
No.
And I mean, I want Isanty to be treated as a community. I don't consider Cambridge, Cambridge is Cambridge, but we're a community. Cambridge and Isanty are a community, no difference between Minneapolis and St. Paul.
I agree. Sister cities.
Yep.
I agree.
Would you like to, we can have it shared at park board to get what their thoughts are.